Okay, good evening, guys. All right, this is the meeting, City Council Special Meeting, 6:30 PM, Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, the city website is www.samamish.us/news/events/tv-21/cityfacebook, www.facebook.com/cityofsamamishwa. Comcast Channel 21, that's available within Samamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. The city website, you can view them on the city website at samamish.us/news/events/tv-21. You can also vote, you can also view them at YouTube or on the Comcast 21 channel. First thing we're going to have is, Mike, you want a call order?
All right, Mayor Karen Moran.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Christie Mauchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Drine.
Present.
And also present here, we have interim City Manager Dave Rudat, Parks Director Anjali Meyer, and let me just name off the folks who are on the go-to meeting here. We have Chris Jordan, Cynthia Tawana, Jim Hominick, Lisa Marshall, Melanie Anderson, and I think that is it. And we have a couple people on for public comment, but we'll wait for those.
Right, thank you. And Mike, would you like to lead us in the pledge this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First up is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Do they have any comment?
Yeah, I wonder if we might add one item to the agenda, and that's because we got a message from Luke Esser requiring immediate information from the city of Samamish relative to construction, and that feedback is due tomorrow by 5:00 PM. So if we're going to have an opportunity for the city to have a position, we're going to have to talk about it tonight.
Okay, what is it called? What do you, what do you want to list it under? Put a name to it.
It would be their new business.
Okay, we'll put it down as number five.
Okay, and this is AW, you can just list it as AWC feedback.
Okay. I have not seen that. Okay.
Mayor.
Approval of pardon?
I would like to add the topic that you and I discussed today, which was at least starting the discussion on us having some sort of a restriction on late fees and interest for people who are late on their rent.
Okay, I thought we were going to have, have a discussion on that, but we can add that. Let's put that on, let's put that to six.
Good point.
Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'm looking for an approval of the agenda with the adjustments as just made.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Seven zero, great. Next is public comment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is still able to be submitted. Written comment, written comment, public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@manderson@samamish.us and citycouncil@samamish.us.
Okay, and so for the virtual, excuse me, for the verbal comment tonight, we have three people I see who have called into the meeting. They're all on mute right now, and I will unmute the callers in the order in which they joined the meeting. So when you're unmuted, you will have three minutes to provide public comment. At the end of the three minutes, you will hear a beeping tone indicating that you are out of time. And please start your comment by first stating your name and the city you live in for the record. I will now go ahead and unmute the first caller, and you should hear a tone. First caller, can you hear me?
Am I the first caller?
Sounds like you are it.
All right, well, Melanie, if you could put up my slide. I'm Romero Valderrama from Samamish, Washington, and I wanted to talk about the Jerran case coming up. I'm greatly disheartened to see on this week's council agenda that a contract for Egligent in the amount of $100,000 is being requested so that the firm can advise on the Jerran case. This resolution dated April 9th is less than two days after the city manager and council stated on April 7th that they were hiring Egligent for a budget-neutral amount of $49,999 and only to advise the city on GMA issues, and specifically not on the Jerran case. The city manager emphasized that he wanted to control costs, be forthright and transparent, but with his new request for funding, the city and the council are being anything but forthright, transparent, or mindful of costs. During the April 7th council meeting, when the city manager was questioned by council members at why at a time of mass layoffs and when told by the state to focus on essential and ordinary business, was the city manager securing yet another contract for an illegal firm in addition to Kenyon Deason and Madrona? And the city manager cited in response that he deemed it necessary to advise staff on GMA land use and comprehensive. It was to be cost-sensitive and quote, "will not exceed $49,000." He also stated, as shown, the contract does not include the representation on the outstanding cases to which the city is a party to, specifically the Jerran case. Under previous council direction and action, the Jerran case is being handled by the Madrona Law Group with Kim Pratt as lead counsel, close quotations. Yet, less than 48 hours later, we have a resolution for another $100,000 just for that. This is especially egregious, as not only is this duplicating the expense, but the Jerran case was already heard by the growth board, and even in an appeal, no new arguments are allowed. So what is the point of wasting another $100,000 plus in new representation to argue what the existing attorneys argued and those existing attorneys that were hired by council direction know best? Forty-eight hours for reversing itself after repeatedly stating that the council and the city is cost-sensitive, forthright, and transparent. This is a new record for waste and insensitivity, and in a time of great social and economic turmoil for the city, state, and nation. I expect the council to reject this and to show both the sensitivity to the costs and the time that we're living in and statements made just 48 hours ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you, you had that, you must have had that timed, it was almost perfect timing.
I had one minute and .07 seconds to, oh, one second and .07 left to go.
You did have it timed.
Okay, I will go ahead and unmute the next caller. Next caller, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. My name's Rich Shively, I'm the parish administrator at Mary Queen of Peace in Samamish and a resident of the city of Snoqualmie. We've appreciated our work with the city of Samamish on the important part of our mission that includes helping the homeless, and have worked hard to comply with the various aspects of the ordinance in place in the city of Samamish dealing with homeless encampments. The current crisis has impacted our parish's whole way of operating over the past several weeks, like almost every institution in our city, state, and nation. In anticipation of the time, five and a half weeks from now, when Tensity IV would be scheduled to move, and the challenges faced in getting this move set up, including the next toast, we began a conversation related to the possible extension for a month. In a normal cycle, we realize that it takes nearly two and a half months to get a permit approved. I think that's true in Bellevue as it is in Samamish. This is after going through our own internal consultation about the possibility of offering an invitation. With the shutdown of the institutions that Tensity IV would normally be in touch with about a next step, that timeline is in some jeopardy. Assuming even that the stay, the stay-home, stay-healthy order is lifted by the governor on May 4th, the challenge faced in getting a move ready, a new site permitting, and all aspects of the move, which would not allow the appropriate social distancing likely required at some level, doesn't seem very likely. If we were not under the current crisis, Tensity IV would not be asking us to consider a longer stay, and we would not be asking the city. In the spirit of the ordinance which defines length of stay, we are not asking for an indefinite extension. A one-month extension is our request. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Okay, next caller, I'm about to unmute you. Can you hear us? Caller, can you hear us?
Okay, thank you for those who called in for public comment. Okay, next we have new business. First up is the discussion on event cancellations due to COVID-19, and who wants to handle that topic?
Thank you, Mayor, this is interim City Manager Dave Rudat, I'll handle that. This agenda bill is for event cancellations due to COVID-19, and what is needed from the City Council? Shall the City Council consider cancellation of major events through July and/or August, including but not limited to the annual Fourth on the Plateau celebration, Samamish POP, and the farmers' market due to impacts of COVID-19, and the related planning, staffing, and potential health impacts to city employees and the community at large? The facts and information summary disclosed that on March 23rd, 2020, Governor Inslee enacted the stay-at-home, stay-healthy order requiring all Washington residents to stay home unless pursuing any essential activity, and banning all gatherings for social, spiritual, and recreational purposes, among other measures. This order was originally set to expire on April 6th, 2020, but was recently extended until May 4th, 2020, because the measures are still needed to reduce the impact of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. The Parks, Recreation, and Facilities Department manage a full scale, a full schedule of community events, which ramp up in the spring and are in full swing by summer. The department must now plan to mitigate potential impacts to their events should Governor extend the order further, possibly into summer or beyond. Staff is requesting council's direction on whether to proceed with, postpone, or cancel some or all of the following events. Number one is the Fourth on the Plateau, July 4th, 2020, Samamish's Farmers Market, May 6th, 2020 through September 16th, 2020, and/or Samamish's Party on the Plateau, or POP, August 7th and 8th, 2020. Please note, the interim City Manager has preemptively canceled all events and rentals through May 31st, 2020. The Fourth on the Plateau is the largest city event put on each year, drawing tens of thousands of attendees, dozens of vendors, and countless volunteers, staff, and others. With less than three months until the event, staff is well underway in the planning of this event. One of the first big decision points that must be made this week is regarding fireworks. The fireworks vendor requires a 50% payment upfront, approximately $14,000, and 50% upon completion. While the vendor has offered to apply credit towards a future event should the Fourth on the Plateau be canceled, there is a risk that they will not be in business next year. The credit for fireworks can be used for 2020 Samamish POP, or 2021 Fourth on the Plateau, or the 2021 Samamish POP. And there is a spot where you can get more information on that event in the agenda. The Samamish Farmers Market. The Samamish Farmers Market is an annual program consisting of market events each Wednesday during the spring and summer. It's operated by the Samamish Chamber of Commerce through a memorandum of understanding with the city. The Samamish Party on the Plateau, or POP. Samamish POP, previously Samamish Days and Samamish Nights, is a two-day event with activities, performances, and other items for the weekend. It attracts roughly 2,000 to 3,000 people over the two days. This event could be postponed and held in September if need be. Other smaller events, including Concerts in the Park, Outdoor Movies, Kids First, Shakespeare in the Park, and other partnered events. Under that subject heading, we have all of these events take place in July and August. Of these, the smallest event, Kids First, attracts 75 to 125 people per performance. And the largest event, Concerts in the Park, attracts 500 to 800 people per concert. Sponsorships for these events are not due until June 1, 2020. Staff's preference is to wait on a decision for these events until late May to see what the Governor's Office and King County Public Health will recommend for the summer. The financial impacts. All events are already budgeted this year. The Fourth on the Plateau expenditures are roughly $80,000, with $30,000 of that amount covered in sponsorships, resulting in a net cost to the city of about $50,000. The Samamish POP expenditures are estimated at $32,000, with about $14,000 of that amount covered by sponsorships, costing the city a net amount of about $18,000. The city's contribution to the farmers' market is $10,000 every year. To date, no funds have been used or distributed for these events. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for the discussion among the council.
Counsel, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take them one at a time. I'm going to take them one at a time as they're listed, and then we're going to go through, so people can talk twice, but I'm going to ask that we listen so we're not duplicating, and that we try to keep our answers concise. I know these are going to be, these are emotional topics because nobody wants to have to cancel anything. So let's try to be clear, concise, and thoughtful in our answers. And I have people lined up here. First up, I believe we have Jason.
Wow, thank you. My question is geared towards when decisions need to be made. In terms of the Party on the Fourth, the Fourth of July celebration, it sounds like we have a deposit that is kind of driving the financial consideration, a deposit that's driving our decision-making at this time. I would argue that because we don't know how that's all going to go, and the financial consideration, given where we are and given the economy, I would think we should consider, at least my opinion, that we do not move forward on placing the deposit and go ahead and cancel the Fourth of July. On the Party on the Plateau, I would think, I'm sorry, on the farmers' market issues, I guess my thought is that because it runs all summer long and there is no deposit, I don't think, I think that that would be something we could take month to month as information warrants. And because there's food, and because there's small businesses involved, I would think that that'd be something that we wouldn't necessarily need to have to make a decision on tonight. So I would be willing to consider putting that off, or at least going forward with the interim City Manager's decision of not having anything in place through the end of May, and then at our first week in, our first meeting, the first week in May, seeing how things have changed, if they've changed, and then make a decision for June based upon the lay of the land the first week in May. And then the same thing for July.
Point of order, point of order, please.
What's your point? And I don't know who is speaking.
This is, I'm, this is Councilmember Ross.
Okay, Councilmember Ross.
The chair introduced, yes, the chair introduced the discussion of these topics to do one at a time, and I construe that to mean we're talking about the first one, one of the events at a time, and cycle through that, make a decision, then go to the next topic, and then go to the next third one. Is that fair to say?
Okay. Point, what's that?
So the first topic was the...
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July, okay, then I'll let that go and just go ahead, and I think we should cancel the Fourth of July celebration and speak on the farmers' market when that comes around. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, let me go to, okay, next I have Christie, oops, sorry, Councilmember Mauchow, followed by Councilmember Stewart, followed by Councilmember Gamblin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Relative to the Fourth of July, while I appreciate the financial considerations here, this is really about public health primarily, and so I am, of course, sad to not have that formal celebration and gathering. I think we would be foolish to pursue this, knowing how many people show up for this, and there's no way that we can control, even if we moved forward with it, social distancing. So I am favorable to canceling the Fourth of July celebration this summer.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I think there are a couple things. I think Councilmember Ritchie's point wasn't that this was about money. I think his point was about the fact that what, what is the due date for making these decisions? When do we have to decide about the Fourth of July celebration, and what should we do? And I think his point about the money is that there is a deposit that is due this week that is driving us to have to make a decision today. I would agree that I can't think of a way to have a Fourth of July celebration where we could enforce any kind of safe distancing, depending on what that distancing recommendation is by the Fourth of July. The one thing that I wanted to ask was, is there a way to have a different location for where we set off the fireworks, where we could set off the fireworks, not have anyone come, but where we could set off the fireworks so people could see them from their homes? I don't know if that's something we would want to consider, that while people are shut in in their homes, they could go out in the front yard and watch the fireworks.
Mayor, members of council, we'd have to take that under advisement. I have no adequate familiarity with the landscape, with forestation, the fire hazards, I'd have to confer with Chief Clark, as well as look at the other logistical possibilities, because anywhere that we put them off, that I can think of, just thinking of topographically and geographically here in the city, I'm kind of flying it over in my head right now, you're going to have a gathering of people. That, that's a tough and difficult thing to monitor, so...
Got it.
That would be my initial thing, is I think it'd be very, very difficult to keep the gathering down, but I have to consult with the chief of police as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Well, given that, then I would concur. I think that while it is our most popular event, single event, I can't, I can't think of any way that we could do it safely, and given that we are unable to do, to do so safely, then I think unfortunately we have to cancel it.
Okay, then next up, we have got Councilmember Gamblin.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I want to reiterate, Councilmember Mauchow's point, that we need to be very, very clear on what we're comparing here. So our main purpose in government is public safety and public health. There is no, in the most optimistic way of looking at this situation, an effective cure or treatment or vaccine happening for minimum six months. Given that, any type of promotion or any type of facilitation of a public gathering is, applies directly in the face of public health by exposing people to potential infection with this. So July 4th should not be considered, and we should cancel it this evening.
Do we have any more comments? Okay, let's move on to, well, do we want to vote on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then do I hear a motion?
I move that we cancel the Fourth of July celebration in Samamish for 2020.
Second.
Any, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Seven zero, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the farmers' market. Okay, first up, I have got Deputy Mayor.
Oh, nope, I didn't have one, but I had a comment.
First up, I've got Councilmember Stewart.
Okay, then I'll go. Thank you, Mayor. Again, I think, I think we're all in agreement that public safety is our number-one concern. And I think that in looking over all of the data, so in reviewing the data from all of the other cities who host farmers' markets, I actually spoke to a council member in Issaquah today, and in looking at information from the King County Department of Health, I think that the prudent thing to do for the farmers' market at this moment in time is to go onto a month-to-month decision-making process. The reason I say that is that in looking at information from other cities and in looking at the information from the King County Department of Health, the goal, if, if there were to be anything this year, the guidelines are to create situations where you limit the number of people in the market, and you can enforce social distancing, just like you do at the grocery store. And that the farmers' markets being outside and providing fresh food that are handled by fewer people, it could actually be a way to provide fresh fruits and vegetables and various sundry foods to people in a manner that's actually safer than even going to the grocery stores. So if, if it's possible to do something later on in the summer, I think we should consider it, always keeping in mind that only if we can do it, do so safely. So I think for the farmers' market, I think we should stay the course on... So I think for the farmers market, I think we should stay the course on not happening in May, and let's reassess on a month-by-month basis for what we're going to do June, July, August, and September, in, in the two months preceding each of those months. So I say we, or in the month preceding, so I say we make the decision on June, the first week of May.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you. So my real concern with the farmers market at this point is that we don't have the ability to control ingress and egress to the market. Frankly, we can't even control access to our own parks right now. People are scaling locked fences and we don't have any way to police that. So I don't know how we could conceive policing all the potential ingress, egress points from the YMCA side, from the front of the 228th side. And I don't know how we would enforce social distancing there either. I think my other concern is that this is sending mixed messages if we cancel the Fourth of July and we're not canceling something like the farmers market. I think this is kind of a it's all or none type of thing. They all involve crowds and we don't have the ability to enforce this. And messages that I've heard just today, the real concern is that we open up things like an event or, which the market is an event, and people collect and we have additional spikes and a resurgence. And it was Dr. Christopher Murray, who is the Director of Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluations at the University of Washington School of Medicine, excuse me, that warned of this very thing that could occur. While I know that our community appreciates the market and wants to be able to shop there for fruits and vegetables and the myriad of other things that are also up at the market, I think the safest thing for us to do is to consider just holding on the market over the summer as we have just done for, for on the plateau. Thank you.
Councilmember Gatlin, followed by Councilmember Ross.
Great. So as I previously stated, I don't want to lose track, the main purpose of government is public safety. So we are in the throes of a worldwide pandemic. And as I mentioned before, any vaccine or effective treatment for this virus is minimum of six months away, more like a year, year and a half away. We've canceled our schools till September, we've shut down businesses and people's livelihoods, and instituted social distancing to control the spread of this deadly virus. The farmers market was created to invite and encourage our residents to come together to socialize and mingle in a group environment. And it's great fun. But for the city of Sammamish to organize and promote this at this time is beyond irresponsible, as it will facilitate thousands of people congregating in a confined area. So this event is a fun luxury, is how I look at it. But how would we ever live with ourselves if just as when we're starting to show progress on suppressing the virus, we encourage thousands of our residents to place them, place themselves in a dangerous environment that could very well cause a new resurgence in Sammamish? I, I really want people to think, how will we face the families of those that we could be sickening and possibly dying from this event we organize and promote? And to what benefit? So people can buy vegetables or have a burger? So I don't believe we can modify this event to a month-to-month at this point where we can be certain, and I want to stress the word, certain, that there would be no new COVID infections occurring there. Do I miss socializing with my friends in Sammamish yet? Would it be good to get people together at a farmers market? Sure. But again, at what cost? This is not about what you or I want. This is about preserving and protecting public health. It's not fair to have asked, and we quite frankly demanded, so much of our residents and businesses that have sacrificed so much, and then to allow these events to occur before we can be sure that they're totally safe. So if there is even the possibility of a single new case of COVID being transmitted at this event, at the farmers market, we have no business promoting and hosting it. Next year will come soon enough, and with it will return this to this event that we love. But this year, there's no way we can guarantee the safety of our residents and we have no business promoting this. So I believe we should cancel this for the year. Thanks.
Councilmember Ross?
Councilmember Gatlin, well said. You saved me a lot of words. I'm not going to repeat most of what you said, but we do want to emphasize that the consensus amongst scientists is there's no, the virus will not end until there's an effective vaccine. And according to Fosse and other experts, they say it's more than a year before a vaccine will be ready. We need, we will be irresponsible over the next several months to create a city-sponsored social gathering that may reinject the virus in our community. It's not over, we need a pause, we need to clear the deck this summer to have maximum opportunity for the safety of our citizens. I frankly do not want to play Russian roulette with our citizens. So as, as such, I want to pause, I don't support this or any other event this summer. And so I would support canceling it for this year.
Okay, staying on round one, Councilmember Trean.
Yeah, hey, so I agree with Councilmember Ross and Gatlin. And this is the only thing I would add, because I totally agree with, if we don't have a vaccine, I'm not going anywhere. And that's because I have five people that I love dearly who are all on the high-risk category. So I'm not going anywhere to put them at risk. The other thing that is really disturbing and saddens my heart really deeply is the fact that it hasn't been, I haven't confirmed it yet, but I believe we've had our third death in the city of Sammamish due to COVID-19. Okay? And the first one was like two weeks ago, and then like two days ago, and then now another one. So I don't, I don't see this thing, this is a beast that's not letting up. And for us to open up a public gathering is irresponsible. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take a turn before we go to round two. I'm just going to speak about the fact of the numbers, and I've been following them online since the counties put them online. And we have seen, as, as this week shows, that we've got the numbers with the, the deaths tallies that are coming in, we've got the numbers of the deaths coming in to the city, and the fact that our numbers continue to go up in the city. They're not at the rapid pace they were, so we're leveling off from that standpoint. But we are still continuing to go up. And so that tells me that we've got a ways to go. And as a mom who's got two kids on the front line, I, I know today I'm, I sounded off and so I made my opinion pretty clear, but I'm, I really, really am worried about the fact that if we go out there and we open this up and we open something up to the public and one person, one person started this in China, for goodness sake. It takes one person. So I don't want to do anything silly and wrong that would do something that would just completely cause chaos to our frontline people or anybody else. And certainly our residents don't need to have this. Going on to round two, we have got Councilmember Ritchie, followed by Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. My point before and just now, not to be repetitive, is that we don't need to make a decision about this right now. And there are a lot of facts or there's a lot of information that's coming out day to day, week to week. And different than the, the deposit requiring Fourth of July event, this does not require the money being spent until we actually put it together, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I just don't think we need to make a decision on this yet. And we may have an opportunity as the summer goes forward to move forward with it, we may not. And I certainly don't want to be in a situation where we're saying no too soon. We may wind up, we may very well wind up saying no. I just think it makes sense to keep our eye on the things that we can act on as they present themselves and as new data comes in. And if, I certainly think public health is priority number one, obviously. If that needs to be said out loud, I'll say it there. But I, I think that we have an opportunity to, we have several events, this is one that we have the opportunity to, to prolong our decision and make decisions as we go. And if we can have an event in a safe way and we can create the atmosphere that is safe, and I don't think there is ever a safe event. I mean, going to the grocery store isn't 100% safe, right? So I mean, I think that this is an opportunity for us to, to, to let the facts come out and let data guide us in the right direction. And if we can't have it because of a state mandate of gathering of numbers, then we can have it. But I don't think there's any benefit in, in stopping it outright now before we have more data that will be coming in over the next few months. So I certainly am optimistic, I hope that things go that way. But by no means would I want to risk anybody's health, I just don't think we need to make that decision yet. So, thank you.
I assume it's my turn. Yeah, I've got a couple of questions for staff or the interim city manager. My first question is, I thought that I had read that farmers markets were actually deemed in the, as part of the essential businesses, in the governor's order. Do we know that, the answer to that?
Good evening, this is Anjali Maya, interim director, Parks Recreation and Facilities. Yeah, that is correct. Governor Inslee has indicated that farmers market, and that's, you know, only sticking with fresh food, flowers, plants, vegetables, is deemed essential services.
Great. On that same note, I'm assuming if that was part of the order, I'm assuming it came with a list of meat, like restrictions and, you know, guidelines on how to safely execute that, just like with our supermarkets, with our restaurants going to take out only. Is that also true? Do we have a list of guidelines on how to, how one would do that safely?
Yes, we do have guidelines. And just a reminder, this is not a city-run event, we have a memorandum of understanding with the Chamber of Commerce. So it's the Chamber of Commerce that has been working on this and they have shared the, you know, the steps that they would have to take different from previous years to make sure that they have added precautions. And then farmers market will only be allowed to be opened once they have a pre-approved operational plan with the Department of Public Health.
So would it also then be on the chamber to have to staff and enforce the social distancing and, and restrict how many people could enter the, the market?
That is correct.
Okay, so I guess I feel like, so again, I want to emphasize, and I, I really appreciate all of the council members, you know, reiterating that our first and foremost concern is for the safety and the health of our community and every, and every single resident here. So that is absolutely top of mind. What's also top of mind for me are our local farmers who, who need to be able to sell their food and, and being able to ensure that we provide adequate food supplies to our residents. And not to create any sort of concern, but in, in addition to the data that says we shouldn't be having any gatherings, and in my mind, if we did allow this to move forward at any point in the summer, it would not be as a gathering place, it would be as a shopping venue. Again, similar to the fresh food department at, at the supermarket. And that would be the only thing that we would allow, would be as, as a means for people to go in, do some shopping and leave. It would, it would definitely not be to have any sort of gathering. To Councilmember Gatlin's point, I wish that we could make the statement that we could make everything 100% safe, but we know that even going to the grocery store is not 100% safe. So again, I think that we should get some more data from the King County Department of Health. I sent an email to that effect, asking for that information, to find out what would be involved in doing this, and if we could do it in a way that we would make it equally as safe as going to the grocery store. And I think that if, if we could do that, if we could ensure that it was equally as safe as going to the grocery store, then I, I don't think that, I, I think it would actually be a good thing to, to do, again, if the conditions could be met in a way to make it equally safe as buying, you know, my lettuce from the grocery store. So I, again, would be in favor of getting some additional information from the King County Department of Health, as well as maybe seeing what the plan is from the chamber to be able to execute this in a way that keeps it equally safe as, as getting your produce from the grocery store. And if that is possible at some point this summer, then we go on a month-to-month decision-making process and we follow the guidelines from the state and from the county, and we work with our surrounding communities, cities, and find out how they're, they're looking to potentially execute this as well. So that would, that would be my recommendation. I just, again, I appreciate, and I think we should absolutely do everything we can to protect the safety of our residents. But it's my understanding that buying the fresh produce via the markets would actually
Can I, can we?
I'm sorry?
Did you have something extra that you wanted to add?
I was saying that the food is, is potentially safer than the food at the grocery store because it's handled by fewer people. So I was, but thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Who do I have next? I have got
I think it's, I think it's me. I'm looking at the comments.
Okay, there you go. Deputy Mayor?
Okay, so I, I still stand by the comments that I made previously, and therefore I'm going to make a motion that we cancel the 2020 farmers market.
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, those who said nay, could you please, I'm, I think I heard it was Pam and Jason, is that correct?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so the last one up is Party on the Plateau. And you guys, I'm cutting people off and I didn't mean to, there's, and I also am having problems with this, I have problems with the screen. So Party on the Plateau, and I don't have a comment, please. So who would like to start the discussion on the Party on the Plateau? Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Sure, I'm just going to go ahead and start with a motion that we cancel the Party on the Plateau.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second discussion.
Yeah, this is Jason, and I have a question.
Okay.
Is there a financial commitment that would be needing to be made between now and the, is there any, is there any financial commitment? Is there a date certain? Can we move it to later in the summer potentially? Is there any flexibility as far as the city is concerned, maybe more directed to the city manager, that would allow some flexibility in this? Because we don't know how things are going to look in, say, August, September, or even October. Rather than just canceling it outright.
Mayor, members of council, we'd have to go back and talk to the vendor as to his timeline on ordering fireworks, because you had those unless it was the
No.
This is for the Party on the Plateau, I think.
And I think that June 1st is a known deadline, and I'm going to let Chris Jordan, who is our recreation manager and on this call, confirm that.
Correct. Okay, great. Okay, great.
You want to unmute caller five?
So, I, I just have an open dialogue. I made the assumption that you had fireworks at that event because the vendor had said, if you're, if you don't have the fourth and you've paid me the money, I'll, I'll carry it over to the fourth. So, I thought you had, you know, two events here. I'm a newcomer to town, so, so you don't have that deadline. But I think having Chris or Anjali address movement of the date in staffing because of the gathering of 2,000 to 3,000 people is a challenge yet, but I'll let her answer that. Thank you.
Okay. Chris, do you want to confirm? Is June 1st a date when you would need to start making deposits for the Party on the Plateau?
Doing funding, but also money. Yeah.
Chris, could you try that again?
Can you hear me? Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, we, late May, early, first, June 1st is, works perfect for our funding, but also because that's probably the time we would start marketing too. So, that's kind of the timeframe we would, we would need to know if we're going to move forward with this event or not.
Thank you.
Okay. Jason, did you have any other questions?
Nope. I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. I have council member Gamblin.
Yeah. Not to sound like a broken record, guys, but since the pandemic, it's readily acknowledged that we at this point have no effective treatment. Treatments are possibly six months to a year out. Vaccine is a year out. There could be an argument made for the farmers market that at least it provides fresh food, fresh vegetables. The Plateau, Party on the Plateau, is strictly a social gathering of large groups of people. It is the exact opposite of what is indicated when you have a virus that you can catch from other people. The Party on the Plateau allows people to get together and mingle. The fire trucks are there, the kids climb on them. At night, the food vendors come, they put up tables, people wander back and forth to different tables, they sit and they eat together. It is a social gathering that, again, is the exact opposite of everything that's indicated on social distancing. The fact is that, again, if we sponsor, propose and sponsor and support an event whose sole purpose it is to bring people together to gather, we are basically acknowledging that we could be putting people's lives in danger and we're promoting that. The virus is, is highly communicable. When gatherings like this happen, the virus is spread. We could have a second outbreak here in August. There is very, very little in the way of argument on why this would be a good idea. It's not a good idea now. It won't be any better idea in June or July because we know what we can do to slow the virus and stop it, and that is not to gather in large groups in social situations. So, let's just be clear that there's nothing here to indicate that we would ever want to subject our residents to this. And be aware, if we hold an event like this, we're giving tacit approval to our residents to say, this is a good idea for you to come here. This is a good idea for you to gather in a group and possibly become infected and possibly bring it home to your elder, to your elderly relatives, or maybe bring it home to someone who's immune suppressed that you run into. We are basically saying to our residents, come on out and do this because we won't have a solution to this by August or September. Acknowledging that, the responsible thing for us to do is to cancel this event right now. Thank you.
Council member Stewart?
Yeah. So, I have a couple of questions. One is, is there any way to, to host anything like the Party on the Plateau where we could encourage or create any kind of social distancing?
This is Anjali. I'll try and take that question. I, the only thing that comes to mind is we could try and figure out a modified version of the Party on the Plateau, scale it down in some fashion. And I don't know if Chris Jordan has any ideas, our rec expert. Chris, if you want to add something, we've unmuted you.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, we could scale it down or also, we've been trying to pick out the box because it's something new, you know, what's happening. So, we could always do a concert, but we can show it live on our TV or do a Facebook Live. We could use like a one event like that. So, it's something we are, we can think out the box and come back with ideas later. But that's what I'm kind of thinking of right now, my top of head.
Okay. And then how much money are we spending now? So, if June 1st is when we would have to make a decision on some type of an event, are we spent, how much time and money are we spending on, on that planning effort between now and then?
Planning effort right now is just kind of securing the band, getting like the vendors start marketing that way. But the funds wouldn't start coming until June if we start putting in the newspaper, putting in different ads for marketing, then securing different like rides and different like that, petting zoo, doing the art sculpture through the Arts Commission. But those kind of funds wouldn't start till after June, but we would do in-house planning, just getting everything set up for like layouts and stuff like that.
So, my, my, my general sense is that the Party on the Plateau, as we've had it in the past, is not something that could be doable this year. My, my only thought is that we could look to try to have some sort of scaled-down event in September, possibly. Again, we got to see how things are going. I, I agree, and I don't think we need to hear anymore. And we know that there will be no cure, there will be no treatment, there will be no vaccine between now and September. But I, yeah, I don't, I can't, I can't envision the Party on the Plateau being able to be safely done this year. If there is, if there are ideas on how we could do some sort of concert with a limited number of people in attendance and then livestream it or something to that effect, I think that we probably should be spending our time trying to come up with events like that that we can safely do for our community, even if it is, you know, mostly virtual for people. I think we're going to have to do something so that people have, you know, other things to look at and look forward to. So, I would say that, yeah, the Party on the Plateau, as we've had in the past, is likely not, not something we can do. If we push the event to September, would that, would that give us more time to try to figure out some other ideas for a quasi-virtual event and give us till, say, July 1st?
Chris? Yeah. We could do something in September and start bringing up some ideas and then probably bring it back to Dave and Anjali and even council, probably beginning of June, especially that once we hear more from King County Health Department Governor late this month or early May and what's going to happen in the summer and kind of restrictions they're going to be at.
So, again, my recommendation would be that we postpone this decision pending some ideas from staff if there is a quasi-virtual safe distancing type of event on a smaller scale that we might be able to put together in September at the earliest. And again, that would all depend on the situation on the ground and the recommendations from the state and the county.
Okay. Staying on first rounds here, we have council member Tree.
Hey, actually, and I'll defer to Chris Ross because he's got a question.
Okay.
Hello. This is Chris. This question is to Mr. Rudat regarding, there's a lot of, there's some, not a lot, but some comments regarding, well, we can think of a differ, the scaled-down. That's going to take a lot of brainstorming and staff involvement and time. If we, clearing the deck for this, is it fair to say there's substantial or adequate work statement for the given staff to, that's important for the city to work in lieu of brainstorming on these potential alternatives?
Mayor, members of council, on this particular issue, I don't, I don't want to be a, I'll call it a David Downer, okay? But staff is, is already tasked and doing the best they can and being very nimble with our telework. This is just a whole new angle. I'm sure there's some creative people, but I'm reluctant to try to task, unless the council really wants to try to do something here, we're going to become kind of a production company. And this is something that's not in the normal wheelhouse of the city staff that I can see. So, I'm reluctant to engage a lot of important staff time. Is it costing us money that we're paying out to somebody else? No, but it's, it's taking hours and hours to try to sort through and just prepare for what we've gotten today. And earlier today, we had a staff meeting for an hour with four people. And we do that quite a bit to think of a whole new venue and presentation for this otherwise very important event celebrating the birthday of Samamish. I'm just reluctant to try to figure out what to task them with, let alone to see that it was able to be pulled off. But thank you for asking for my input.
Thank you.
Council member, who did we have here? Council member Tree?
Yeah. So, I moved that we cancel the pop.
There's already a motion on the floor.
Oh, well, then let's just get, I moved that we vote then. Call for the question.
That was my comment. Call the question.
Call the question.
Okay. So, we have, I don't even get to voice my opinion again. Okay. So, we, we have a motion on the floor and a second and a call for the question. So, what is the rule? I think we have to call for the question. So, we're going to call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Not if you don't have any more comments.
Yes, I know we're going to call for the question. All in favor? Do you want to repeat the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is to cancel the Samamish.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay. I wanted to just say, I wanted to say my comment on this one. I was, I said yes only because I know that we can't do that event in August, but I wouldn't have been opposed to doing something once we know we can because we're missing a whole lot of things, you know? It may be September, it may be October, it may be sometime this fall before we're able to do something. And I don't know what the...
Clean of border.
...look like, but I just want, yes.
So, we've already passed this motion, so we can't deliberate it after we've passed the motion.
You're the mayor. You can make a comment anytime you want, Madam Mayor.
Well, thank you. I get no comments. I know, I know how that works now. I'm going to make sure I get my comments in early.
I, I know how it works. I've been cut off before too, Karen. It stinks.
All right. Next on the agenda.
Madam Mayor, there, there is another item on there. It wasn't enumerated, but it is all of the other small events. Do we need to make a decision on those?
Okay. I don't have that up because I can't read that and have my chat box open. So, hang on, I have to read the... Okay. So, other smaller events, including concerts in parks, outdoor movies, kids for Shakespeare. Okay. So, does anybody want to make a motion on what to do with all the other smaller events?
I'd be happy to. I moved that we cancel them all. They are all asking for collections of people, and I think we've beat that horse to death a couple of times here on the other subject matters. So, it applies to all of these as well.
I'd second that motion.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. Thank you, Pam. I didn't, I didn't see that because I don't have that on my screen. Next is the legal representation for the Jaren case. And who is, okay. Our interim city manager.
Mayor, members of council, the agenda bill is discussion legal representation for the Jaren case. Needed from council tonight, should the council consider changing attorneys from the Madrona Law Group to Eglick and Whited for the Jaren versus City of Samamish case? Key facts and information provided, city council contracted with the Madrona Law Group to represent the city in the Jaren versus City of Samamish Growth Management Hearings Board case after the lead attorneys in the case separated from Kenyon and Dyson to join the Madrona Law Group. The Madrona Law Group represented the city through the initial phase of the case, and now they and the city are awaiting the board's decision, which is anticipated on April 20th, 2020. Council members have voiced, voiced a desire to discuss and evaluate whether the city is in the process of, where the city is in the process of further developing city regulations that are the basis for managing growth, traffic, and the future livability of the city. They also wish to discuss whether a change in the legal representation is needed to guide them through any requirements that may result from the board's decision, as well as be the guiding consultant as the city moves forward dealing with land use, traffic concurrency, and balancing livability and growth. On April 2nd, 2020, the interim city manager executed a contract with Eglick and Whited to serve as outside counsel to advise staff on GMA land use and comprehensive planning matters. He recommends executing a separate contract with Eglick and Whited to serve as the city's representation, representation on matters relating to the Jaren case. The financial impact that was designated is $100,000 for the additional contract for Eglick and Whited. I'd like to comment that where it was brought up further in public comment, that the city manager brought forth a contract previously that was just for land use is correct for $49,999. And council, since then, as stated in the agenda bill, brought this issue up and requested this item be brought forward regarding the litigation. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you to deliberate over the discussion. Or preside over the discussion, excuse me.
Okay. Council members, I'm going to ask that we be concise in our answers. We are running late, which we shouldn't be, so I'm going to ask that we think ahead of what we're saying and try not to repeat what other people have said. That in mind, I'm going to call our first one, which is council member Richie.
Thank you. I support pursuing getting additional information, getting free information if we can, as I mentioned in the council meeting last week, from outside resources. But I, more to what, former council... But I, more to what former Councilman Ramirez Valderrama mentioned, this is, I don't know that an attorney is going to be able to help us argue and appeal if the facts have changed. I don't know. But I think a lot of it depends on what the result is of the hearing or the administrative law judges, what they say at the Growth Management Hearings Board on, I think it's the 26th. So I would think that because this is not something that we have to make a decision on right now, it is not COVID-related, it is not necessary, it's not routine. I don't necessarily know that this is something we should be talking about right now. But having said that, because we are talking about it, I would oppose spending potentially up to $100,000 on legal representation before we know what we're going to have to be dealing with. I would hope that we can wait on this for the decision, ask for continuance while we review our legal options, and then hire an attorney that is appropriate for what comes down from the Growth Management Hearings Board. If we do need to hire an attorney to, if the decision of the council is to move forward with an attorney and appeal, we've got time for that. We can deal with that, and we can review the decision and hire the appropriate attorneys to do that. But I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here, guys. And I'm hopeful we can kind of be conscious of that while we're waiting for a decision. So, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Why?
Those who aren't speaking could go on mute. That would help a lot there. Thank you. This is a question for legal representation. So is this topic, does this fall under the purview of the governor's order of being necessary or routine? Because it is definitely not COVID-related.
This is Lisa Marshall, serving as your city attorney for the meeting tonight. We don't have a specific instruction manual for what is necessary and routine. I did provide information on this issue prior to it being scheduled for your agenda tonight and indicated that litigation doesn't stop with COVID-19. We are still having decisions issued, appeal discussions will take place during this emergency. And I would hate to see the city lose its options with respect to legal representation. So while this may be a gray area, I do think it's a gray area worth pursuing during your meeting.
So the decision from the Growth Management Board is due out on April 20. Wouldn't we have time after that to see what the decision is to determine if we needed additional legal counsel? And if we needed additional time due to the challenges that we have due to the COVID situation, couldn't we ask for a continuance? And wouldn't that most certainly be granted?
Well, I really can't speak to what the board will do regarding continuance. The issue will be the same in 30 or 60 days as it is today. You will be making a decision about legal representation during the COVID emergency. So I don't see a huge sudden difference in having that discussion today versus having it in 30 days.
But we don't know what we're going to do. If the decision comes down and there's nothing for us to do, then we don't need legal representation any longer.
Well, that's not my understanding. My understanding is that the legal representation is desired for the Jaren case as well as other Jaren-related issues.
Could you tell me what those are? Because other than this case, I don't know what those other Jaren-related issues are.
I think the city manager spoke to that.
I'm sorry, can someone clarify that for me?
This is Dave Rudat, interim city manager. Yeah, the Jaren case rolls over to concurrency, the land use, the ordinance. Council desired this, so we moved forward on it so that there was adequate time for an attorney. And their availability to get up to speed is unknown. However, if the city prevails, there is a likelihood, what that percentage is, we don't know, that the case would be appealed by Jaren. And if we have a partial ruling, then those issues need to be evaluated by current council, by future council, as to the defenses the city may put forth. And certainly, you'd want to consult as you begin to move forward and what kind of decisions the council may make. Now, it was one of the reasons I originally went out to get additional counsel, so that we would have other opinions. This one goes beyond that with the potential litigation matters. If the city were to be found to have their ordinance invalidated, then there are certainly other legal matters and defenses that the city would need to take.
So if I understand it, you executed a contract up to $50,000 to answer those other questions, right, around the land use, et cetera? Is that not correct?
That is correct, in support of myself and the Community Development Department and/or Public Works related to items of land use ordinance development regulations. Correct.
Okay, so this is really just about the Jaren case, correct?
Yes, primarily, yes, sir.
Okay. So don't we already have a contract for legal representation for the Jaren case?
And in fact, you do. And I was looking at the bills the other day and waiting for still another answer, because you have $80,000 that was allocated to that. And we are nearing that amount of money that would have to come back to the council to be renewed. But yes, you do have a contract in place that represented you before the hearing board with the Madrona Law Group.
So I think we need some additional information about exactly where we are in that contract, what the costs are for the Madrona Law Group versus this new lawyer. And quite frankly, I have a great deal of heartburn signing anything for $100,000 that isn't related to the COVID crisis or assisting our residents in whatever their needs are based on this crisis. As Councilmember Gamblin and Trane and most of the council has said tonight, this isn't going away. You said that we shouldn't be planning to have anything, not even an outdoor supermarket event through September. If that is the case, then our land use issues aren't going to be top of mind anytime soon. And it's my understanding from other jurisdictions that they are not tackling these types of issues right now because they are focusing all of their resources on the crisis and what needs their citizens may have based on the crisis. We still haven't seen any details in terms of what we think that the impacts of, the financial impacts of this crisis will be. I'm sorry, Councilmember Ross, could you mute your phone so we can hear your breathing pretty loud? Thank you. We don't know what the financial impacts will be from this crisis at this point in time. So we haven't seen, I know you guys are working on that, but we haven't seen those results. So I am, I think it is irresponsible and possibly uncaring to be spending $100,000 on an attorney that we don't even know if we need yet, when we haven't even discussed whether or not we need to be providing funds for, say, rent relief or rent assistance like Issaquah has done and other jurisdictions, or contributing additional monies to the human services providers for our citizens that are coming up, you know, some of them as much as $150,000 short on their fundraising at this point in time. So I don't think that this is an appropriate discussion to be having at this moment in time, given the current health crisis and the needs of our citizens.
Okay, next I have got Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Gamblin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I can appreciate that, you know, most of what we're talking about is relative to the COVID-19 crisis. However, litigation is not stopping or coming to a halt due to that pandemic, and we are awaiting a decision. I think as our city manager stated, it's appealable on either side. And I think by the council authorizing this, it doesn't necessarily mean an expenditure of the funds right of way. What we're doing is we're giving authorization to our city manager, should he need it, to act very swiftly on our behalf if we or Jaren appeal the case to Superior Court. Lisa, is it 30 days for the appeal, to file the appeal on either side?
Deputy Mayor Malchow, I believe on a growth board decision, it's appealable 60 days after, but I will have to check that appeal period and get back to you to be precise about it.
Okay, so whether it's 30 or 60 days, an attorney is going to have to file an appeal if it's on our end or respond to it. And we would need someone to be able to do that in an adequate fashion. So again, that could come with authorization from council later if we should deem it necessary. But again, we're not giving, we're telling the city manager, you have our authority to go and hire the city another attorney, should we need it, when we get the decision back. So I just, I think it's worth clarifying that it gives him the ability to act very swiftly if needed. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So although there's been statements made that time is not of the essence here, and there's nothing pressing, nothing that we need to do, in this manner, time is of the essence in preparing for the outcome of the GMA decision. We need our new legal representation to be able to prepare for any eventuality, which we cannot know what they will be at this point. It's better for the city to be prepared for further action rather than trying to play catch-up. And also transferring information from Madrona Law Firm to our new law firm. We, and I'm proposing that we transfer from Madrona and no longer have them as our representation. So lawyers can be changed at any time. And I think we need to be very clear that litigation, as Councilmember Malchow put forward, litigation is going forward. Things are not stopping because of COVID. And we are being tremendously, horribly irresponsible if we're not doing everything we can do to make sure the city is the best representation they can get on this ongoing action. So I agree with this funding. I'd also, if I could, I'd like to make a motion, we may have talked a little bit more, but I'd like to make a motion to instruct the interim city manager to negotiate and execute a contract to retain the law firm of Eglick and Whited to represent the city in any and all land use litigation, including the Jaren versus the City of Samamish case, as deemed necessary by the interim city manager. This contract is to be no more than $100,000 without further council approval. My motion.
I second that.
Okay, any comment? Okay, I'm going to make a comment. I just want to make a comment that, and make sure that it's on the record, that, you know, we have our interim city manager who's said that we are coming close to the end of the $80,000 that was allocated in the first contract. So money is going to have to be allocated toward legal services. So it is not like we are going out willy-nilly to spend money. Money is going to be spent on legal services. It's a matter of where that money is going to be spent. Is there any other comment?
Yes, yes, Councilmember. I think I was in the queue before.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Other than public safety, land use and infrastructure is our primary responsibilities as a city, as well as navigating through the GMA and achieving those goals. We may have a higher rate attorney or firm, but we can't be penny wise and pound foolish on what's most important for our city. And this is quite a trajectory point of determining the future of our city. We need representation to get started ASAP so they can school up on the issue related to Jaren and any other GMA topics, so that he's ready to hit the ground running in defending us in that case and any other cases that may surface. So I fully support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I think we need a little bit more detail on what the terms of this contract would be. What are the rates going to be with this attorney? How does that compare with others? I just, I feel like we're signing over a blank check. And just like the council last week wanted to be prudent and have stopgaps in terms of scaling back the emergency funds for staff from three weeks to two weeks and putting
Point of order, please.
I am making a point.
Who's point? Who's saying?
Councilmember Ross.
Okay, Councilmember Ross?
Councilmember Stewart is once again using prior decisions or unrelated to the question on hand against the decision-making of the current question. I respect the request. Stay focused on the question at hand and do not construe any inference from prior comments on prior decisions.
Okay, so the question at hand is the motion that has been made. Let's repeat the motion on the table.
Can I please finish my comment?
The chair needs the rule on the point of order.
I need to hear, I'm wanting to hear the motion again because I'm trying to, in my mind, see where she's off base.
You got it. Here's the motion again. My motion to instruct the interim city manager to negotiate and execute a contract to retain the law firm of Eglick and Whited to represent the city in any and all land use litigation, including the Jaren v. the City of Samamish case, as deemed necessary by the interim city manager. This contract is to be no more than $100,000 without further council approval.
Okay, I'm going to say that the point is taken primarily because if you go back to the packet, it's the numbers were given in the packet last week, where all the numbers were given as far as
That's a different contract.
what the fees were.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm sorry, that's a different contract. There's no knowing that that would be the terms of this contract. Maybe that's a question, is, where, I believe that we should be prudent in making sure that we understand the terms of this contract. I don't think it should be open-ended. I don't think we should say in this and any future. I think that if we want something specific, I think we should narrow it down and continue to have council come back and approve if we need more. Because I think that in this time of crisis, we're going to be entering, we're certainly in a recession. We're going to be entering possibly the worst recession, maybe even a depression. I think we should be being fiscally conservative. And I think, I'm sorry, but I'm going to make the comment. Last week, we decided to move forward in baby steps and have the council have to act. And I don't think we should be any less careful here. And I don't think there's anything wrong with making that comparison.
Let me make my point more clear. And she did it once again. Councilmember Stewart always reflects back to other decisions, trying to infer there's hypocrisy in the current decision. In other words,
I never said anything about hypocrisy. I said we
The inference, the inference, the inference by saying that you were fiscally conservative on this, but you're not fiscally conservative on the question at hand, is drawing reference outside the swim lane of the current decision. Referring back to other decisions to make your point is my point of order.
Okay, councilmembers.
I concur with Chris Ross.
It's really, really hard for me to try to do that from this side because it's, there's breaks in between the talking. So I agree with the point of order. But let's move on so that we can get done with this. I'm going to go to the next person speaking so that we can get this vote taken. The next person up is Councilmember Gamblin.
Yep, so my motion is not talking about the details. My motion is simply the amounts and what the My motion is simply the amounts and what the motion entails. I'd like that motion voted on. If there's an amendment wants to be added to that motion, Councilmember Stewart is welcome to do that. But in lieu of an amendment that we can vote on, my amendment is on, I mean, my motion is on the table and I'd like a vote, please.
I would like to make an amendment.
Councilmember Stewart.
I would like to make an amendment that we direct the city council, or the interim city manager, to come back to us, to go and negotiate and come back to us with the terms of a contract for our review and approval. And that we set the limit on that to no more than $50,000 and that we can look to extend that as needed as we go. And that it would be limited to the current Jerran case at hand only. And if something else comes up later on, we can address those as they come.
Okay, I'm not hearing a second to that motion. Okay.
Call for the question.
Call the question.
Okay, I didn't add, what was?
Call for the question, please.
Yes.
Okay, so calling for the question. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor of the?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, moving on to our next is the discussion on Tent City 4 permit extension. And I'm gonna give that to, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor, for the record, Madam Mayor, for the record, what was the vote on the last issue? Voted on?
It was a 5-2.
Okay, Mayor, members of council, next agenda bill is Tent City 4 permit extension due to COVID-19. Would the city council, would the city council like to consider an extension of Tent City 4's permit due to COVID-19? Key facts and information summary discloses that Tent City 4 has permitted temporary homeless encampment that has been located in the parking lot of Mary Queen of Peace since January 2020. They were scheduled to move by the end of the month, by the, yeah, the end of the month to their next location, which was to be either a church in Bellevue or Department of Natural Resources land. However, both locations are now unavailable due to COVID-19. Their 19 current residents are now facing the prospect of having nowhere to move when their permit expires on May 23, 2020. The city's municipal code contains provisions regulating temporary homeless encampments, SMC 21A.70.195. The code allows homeless encampments to operate within Sammamish for up to four months. Tent City 4's four-month permit in Exhibit 1 is effective from January 24 to May 23, 2020. The governor's stay-home, stay-healthy order is in effect until May 5 of 2020. So the timing may not be an issue unless the governor extends the order again. For planning purposes, Tent City 4 needs to determine whether they will need to find an alternative location and move by May 23, or whether the city can provide an extension should the governor's order be extended. Mary Queen of Peace has met internally and with Tent City 4 representatives to discuss this matter and has decided to reach out to the city for an extension of one month. Municipal code is very specific that homeless encampments are temporary use and there are no options for the staff to administratively increase during the duration of such a permit. Therefore, if the city council would like to grant an extension, they would need to direct staff to return at a future council meeting with an emergency ordinance to do so. Staff are seeking the council's direction on whether they would like to consider an extension for Tent City 4's permit due to the COVID-19 emergency. Thank you, Mayor.
I move that we direct staff to come back with a 60-day extension.
Second.
60.
Well, we've got, wait a minute, we've got people on. Well, we can't, I'm, I'm gonna go by who's on the, online here. So, because I've got, I've got people in line here to speak. So I'm gonna go with Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I would direct that we move the city manager to draft an emergency ordinance to increase the time permit for the Tent City 4 encampment for 30 days, as requested.
Wait, there's already a motion and a second. Don't we need to discuss and vote on that first?
I'm going back, I'm going back to what, I'm going back to what Karen said. And that's my, I was in the queue, so I was just saying my motion. The chair can rule whatever she wants to go on here.
Yeah, we're just not gonna yell out motions over people. But, so Christie has a motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have discussion. Jason, you are up to speak next. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the rules. I guess I just want to clarify that I think it's good that we extend, whether it's 30 days or 60 days, and to ask the staff to try to come up with that. My question was geared more towards the legal ramifications of the emergency or potential emergency ordinance that may come up if staff can do what we're asking them to do. Is, are there, more towards legal and the city manager, are there any legal ramifications? Or just, I guess more beyond legal, are there any precedent-setting issues we need to be aware of or conscious of before we step into this?
I can attempt to answer that interim city manager, if you don't mind. The legal ramifications are unprecedented. In other words, I have never been through anything like this in my lifetime and I don't think any one of you have either. So we're in relatively uncharted territory regarding how to address specific needs, such as the one expressed by Tent City, when our code doesn't allow us to, to deviate from those requirements. I believe that a draft, careful draftsmanship of an emergency ordinance, which you could make effective immediately with a supermajority approval, would be an adequate way to address extending the time period for Tent City, another 30 days, 60 days, whatever it is they like. It would not be codified. So this would be something that would be temporary in nature and apply only to the specific situation.
Right on. Is that your opinion too there, city manager?
Yeah, I concur with our legal counsel. Thank you, Lisa.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I move, I would like to make an amendment that we have the extension be 60 days because I believe just extending it out 30 days is not going to allow adequate time. I'm sorry, is somebody whistling again? I don't think 30 days is gonna be an adequate amount of time for Tent City 4 to find a new location. So I recommend that we give them 60 days. The fact of the matter is that I think even, even at that point, we may, we may want to look at extending further because having people have to relocate during this time seems dangerous at best and heartless at most. So I would recommend that we, we look at 60-day extension. So that's my proposed amendment.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Stewart, are you looking at doing it in wording of 30 days to start and up to 60 days if needed?
I just say we give them 60 days so they have time to figure out what to do. I don't think, I don't see any need to make it be 30 up to 60. Just give them 60 days.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the gentleman speaking from Mary Queen of Peace was asking for 30 days and I fully support that. We can always come back later if there's a further extension needed and consider that at this time, so I don't support the amendment.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, my question was along the same lines. What I'd heard our interim city manager say and what I'd heard through the course of the comments was that they were requesting 30 days. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And staff contemplated that if it was necessary, we would bring it back for additional council action.
All right, so I did not hear a second on the amendment, so I'm gonna go back to the original motion.
Yeah, I second, Jason, this is Jason, I did second the amendment. So we probably should go down on that.
Oh, Jason, you did second the amendment?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, so we're gonna go and we're gonna vote on the amendment. Okay, so you got your notes that, we have first and second on the amendment. Okay, so all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so all those that said aye, listen, can you list your names for me?
Pam.
Was it Pam Gibson?
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, it's 5-2. Okay, and then going back to the original motion then. And the original.
Can we please repeat the original motion?
Yes, the original motion was, Madam Mayor, this is the deputy mayor. I, I think that Councilmember Gamblin was asking for a repeat of the motion, so I'm just going to repeat my motion if that's okay.
Yes, please repeat your motion.
Thank you. So my motion was to grant an additional 30, actually, it was to direct the city manager to have staff draft a, an emergency ordinance to bring back to council for the additional 30 days for the Tent City 4 camp, encampment that's currently at Mary Queen of Peace.
Okay, all of those in favor, say aye.
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 That's a 7-0. Next on is masks for the grocery store workers. And who would like to speak to that?
Thank you, Mayor. I will.
The interim city manager.
On this particular issue, masks for grocery store workers, council members have been receiving inquiries from residents wondering why grocery store workers are not wearing masks to help slow the spread of COVID-19. To allow the full council to discuss this matter, including potential options for addressing it, the interim city manager has included this topic on the agenda as discussed, as a discussion item. The Centers for Disease Control has provided the following guidance on the face, cloth face coverings that I wanted to provide to the council here. Quote, "The CDC recommends wearing face cloth coverings in public settings where other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain. The example given is grocery stores and pharmacies, especially in areas of significant community-based transmission. It is critical to emphasize that maintaining six feet social distancing remains important to slowing the spread of the virus. CDC is additionally advising that the use of simple cloth face coverings to slow the spread of the virus and help people who may have the virus and do not know it from transmitting it to others. Cloth face coverings fashioned from household items or made at home from common materials at low cost can be used for an additional voluntary public health measure. The cloth face coverings recommended are not surgical masks or the N95 respirators. Those are critical supplies that must continue to be reserved for healthcare workers and for other medical first responders as recommended during the current CDC guidance." End of quote. And then there's a website that can be referred to for more information. Mayor, I'll turn this back over to you to preside over the discussion.
Okay, the wording on this is, in my opinion, is a little bit different than, I guess, what I had envisioned. This sounds like we're looking to, in some way, you know, make sure that we're masked and, I guess, when I looked into this, I was looking at trying to make sure we were helping the people that were behind the registers stay, say stay, say, stay safe. Sorry about that. Ooh, say that fast. And so my concern was making sure that the people working in the stores, you know, they, they are the ones that need the masks. We should, I'm looking for us to push our residents to know that when they go to the store, they should wear masks. But these people that took jobs at the grocery stores certainly did not envision, I'm sure in their minds, that they were gonna be, you know, putting their lives in danger going, you know, taking a job at the grocery store. So in my mind, I was looking at trying to do something to help the people that, you know, are at the grocery store, behind the registers, because many of the stores are not getting face masks to those people that are working in those spots. And, and that's what I was, that was what I was envisioning. I'm gonna turn this over to council and, and see if that's what they were envisioning, but that's kind of where I was coming from. First up on this, I have got Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so Mayor, you and I spoke about this this afternoon and, and I think our goal here, I'm assuming, is to protect everyone. And essential workers are putting themselves at risk every day, whereas most of us are only at risk when we have to go out to said grocery store or whatnot. So I, I think that is, is the ultimate goal of the council. But my questions are, what, what really are the options in terms of what the council can do? Requiring grocery store workers to wear ma, anything other than an N95 mask, my understanding, would, would protect patrons at the grocery store but wouldn't protect the grocery store workers. The only thing that will protect the workers is if everyone coming to the store wears a mask or if they have N95 rest, the N95 masks. And also, I would like, if we're gonna try to protect them, I think it needs to be beyond just masks. I think they need other things like gloves if they're gonna be cleaning the carts and things like that. So I think I have two questions. One is, what options do we really have as a council? Because if we start requiring masks, I don't know that masks are available for everyone. So those, that would be one question. And then if we're gonna require employees have them, don't we want to require that they be ones that protect them, not protect others from them? And I, I think that might be to you, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, members of council, it can be a complicated issue here because if the city decides they want to, and I would defer to legal counsel, but having a lot of experience dealing with union and labor manage, management issues, there may be an underlying issue that we are not aware of with the grocery store union that represents employees at Safeway. I've gone into Trader Joe's and electively, many of the employees in a couple different locations have worn homemade masks. They may have the dusk masks or they may have some of the lightweight masks that you can, you know, order. I haven't seen anybody using N95s because they are very, very difficult to acquire, as we stated in the report. But there may be an underlying issue there. And if the city were to have an ordinance, I'm not sure what sort of challenges we would have if we tried to provide those things. And, you know, donation is another matter. But I just wanted to comment on that. We've got our guidelines for our own employees when they're in enclosed rooms or a meeting with others or out in the public. If they're by themselves in their office, we don't require any. If they're by themselves in their office, we don't require anything. So there are different things for different people. The grocery store workers, maybe other council people want to speak to that, but on labor issues, it can be rather touchy.
So can we, maybe, maybe the right thing for us to do at this point is to find out a little bit more from the businesses in Semamish in terms of, you know, what is preventing them from providing more protective equipment for their employees? And then the second question is, do we have any ideas of how we can get masks to more citizens, so that people who are going to the stores and going to the restaurants can wear masks, which would probably protect the workers more than anything? Is that information, Mr. City Manager, you think we could get?
Well, this is the interim city manager on that issue. Depends on, you know, how far the city council as a whole wants to assert themselves in what we buy and what we provide. It's been difficult for us to get adequate numbers, just to be sure that we've got an adequate backup supply. And we've been fortunate, we received some donations last week, and we've gotten some other supplies in. But when you talk about providing them to our citizens and/or these folks working in stores, it becomes a significant logistical task. The CDC was clear on their guidance is just simple cloth face coverings and homemade or cloth, let me quote, "cloth face coverings fashioned from household items or made at home from common materials at a low cost can be an additional voluntary public health measure." We can look to try to provide more guidance on our Connect Semamish and our Facebook page as well, and some instructions there that will help people make wise choices.
Okay, Pam, did you have more questions?
No, I guess, I guess I'm kind of leaning towards the, I think we need to get some more information and talk about this more. I certainly want, like you, Mayor, to protect the essential employees out there. I just don't know that we have the information or the means to do that just yet.
I agree. Okay, we have got Councilmember Gamlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So based on seeing this agenda item, the last few days, I've made a few phone calls. I did the opportunity to speak with the CEO of Metropolitan Market today, and interesting information from him, they actually had a good supply of N100 masks when this all started, but rather than have the employees wear them, which would have, which they could have done, he instead, they instead went and they donated all those masks to Swedish and Harborview, to the medical staff over there, which I thought was a great idea. So they've been working hard on sourcing more masks. His input is, within the next day or so, they expect to have masks for their employees. They have a very strict sick policy, where if a employee comes to work when they are ill, they can be terminated. So they're very, very locked into keeping the public safe. They're supplying free sanitizing lotion to their employees that they can, when they leave and come, they can make sure they're sanitizing their hands. I also had an opportunity, so my input on Metropolitan Market is, they're all over it. They are hugely aware that they want the public to feel safe. They fully expect all of their people to, they will have masks for all those people. He said there may be some exceptions medically wise, and I didn't get into that, with some staff that may not allow them to wear them, but other than that, they are totally on board as soon as they can catch up. I'm getting these in inventory to have their people wear them. I did also have a brief conversation with the manager down at the Safeway, and his input was basically the same, that they expect their people to be fully masked up within the next day or two. Again, it was a supply chain issue for them. Obviously, there's a lot of folks in different safeways throughout the state, so he expects them to be fully masked also. Both of them mentioned that they are a little concerned that, you know, it's their workers that are really at risk, more than the people coming into the stores. But having said that, they were both fully committed to make sure that the customers were being protected as much as possible. So my recommendation would be, I don't think there's anything we presently need to do as a council to address this. It seems like these different stores are very well aware of making sure people feel safe when they're there.
Okay.
I'm done, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
I think Councilmember Ross had a comment.
I had canceled my comment. Oh, then he's got a comment again. Okay, Councilmember Ross?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think we, the stores are in tune with their requirements, and they're handling various ways in compliance with CDC recommendations. I've seen Plexiglas check stand protections at Home Depot, or Lowe's, one of the two. At Costco, they put the people looking at your receipt in a little enclosed area now. So everybody has a different way, and to Mr. Rudat's point, there may be some options that each employer or union applies. I think it would be too complicated for us to step in and try to do their business. I think they all are stepping up to the issue. I have seen very few exceptions in stores I've visited where I didn't feel like I was seriously constrained from a distancing standpoint or otherwise. So I think they are doing a tremendous job, so I don't think there's an urgent need for us to interfere. I think any type of information to our citizens on those visiting stores behavior would be helpful, and I think we're doing that through our current website, but maybe we can add a section on visiting stores, etiquette and so on, just to help. Public service announcements would be helpful from the city, if anything.
Thank you. Okay, now Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, yeah, I think, I think the stores are doing their best. I think we need to figure out how we can help protect everyone, but particularly these essential workers who are most at risk, because they're out there all day, you know, five days a week, being exposed. So I don't, I don't know that there's any action for us now, but I think that we can continue to work, maybe with the county and at the state level, to figure out how we can get more masks out to citizens, even if they're cloth, so that people going to the stores aren't spreading anything to the workers.
Okay, and I'm going to get in line here before I get cut off. And my comment would be that, you know, even if we did some free advertising and did a push for people to, when you're going to the grocery store, if you have a mask, to please wear it, you know, just out of consideration for these workers. Does anybody have any other comments on this? Because I don't think we're going to have any action on it. Okay, so the next thing that we have is the AWC feedback, and I saw that we had Luke Esser join us. So I'm going to have Luke address this topic.
Yes, and thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, council members. For the record, this is Luke Esser, one of the state lobbyists for the city of Semamish. And I apologize for the short timeline on this matter, but the AWC, the Association of Washington Cities, just reached out late this afternoon with a request to cities to have comment on a, on an issue that has a very short timeline, and I forwarded a couple, a couple documents along, and this is related to the issue of a proposed opening up of construction in our state, much of which has been, has been shut down by the stay-home orders of the governor to date. But there have been efforts to try to have at least some further amounts of construction opened up. The first document, which is titled Phase One Construction Restart COVID-19 Job Site Requirements, has been a joint effort of some business and labor groups on various protections that they think would be adequate to provide for public safety while opening up construction, and it includes requirements for a site supervisor, safety training, social distancing, PPE, sanitation and cleanliness, and policies on employee health and symptoms. The second document, which I think it makes more sense for us to focus on, is a document developed by the Association of Washington Cities and the Washington State Association of Counties about what city and what local government input might be. And while there are five points on this document, which is a draft document, it's really work in progress for, and it's designed to address, apparently there's going to be a conversation Thursday morning between representatives of AWC and WASAC, and this construction working group that is working to try to open up construction further. And I think I can distill it down to these five points, as I read them, I distill them down to two general principles. Number one, that in general, what we're hearing from AWC is that cities want to make sure that there's no relaxation of permitting standards and health and safety standards while these efforts might move forward to open up construction. And second, that local governments need flexibility on permitting, review, and inspection timelines because of COVID-19 crisis, and, you know, there's no business as usual in offices anymore with, with social distancing. So I wanted to bring this matter to your attention, to see if the city did have any comments to, to forward to this progress. Again, sorry for the short notice, but I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to provide any, any feedback, should you so wish.
Karen, can I go? Thank you. I do have some questions first, mostly on the legal side, because my understanding was that the city wasn't actively enforcing anything because of concerns for liability for the city. So Lisa, I'm wondering if you might speak to that, because I guess, I think my, my underlying concern is enforcement of whatever, you know, iteration, that phase one, because this is going to, it looks like it would be a phased approach. Is the city able or not able to do enforcement of this? And what is our liability in doing enforcement?
Yeah, it's problematic, and, you know, there's really, for example, the governor's order allows construction to continue to the extent it's necessary to prevent foliage or waste on real property, and that would be just really impossible to, for staff to insert itself into and enforce. So what staff has done in lieu of typical code enforcement is put an affidavit on permit applications, and the applicant testifies or, you know, acknowledges under oath that that permit is necessary to either prevent or, you know, protect someone from COVID, or necessary to prevent foliage. And staff is not going to insert itself into that inquiry. I don't really see how doing so would provide any benefit to the city. And much like the city requires an applicant in a non-emergency situation to declare that they have legal agency to enter into the application, we're doing a similar thing here. I think that what I understand AWC's objective is, is to keep the economy moving, keep business moving, but it puts the city in a little bit of an awkward position, because then we have set in motion something that we're going to need to enforce. So I would, you know, while I certainly want to be supportive of the initiative, I think that there may be some additional information that we'd like, we would need.
I would agree, Lisa, and I appreciate you speaking to that, because I think, you know, the concern is, is that things go on that aren't supposed to go on. I mean, I have myself witnessed right now, under current conditions, where they're only supposed to be cleaning up sites and securing them, clearly work that's outside of that. And then you see people that are not social distancing while they're doing that work. They don't have on any PPE, and I understand in that phase one, that they're going to have to make these plans, to which they would have to provide PPE, and, you know, all this other stuff, and it would have to be on the site for them to do construction. But I do, you know, if we can't enforce anything and we can't police it, my concern is that projects will go on that are well outside of the scope of the governor's intent. And, you know, I ended up being case in point, I had a contractor come knock on my front door in the morning one day, because he wanted me to not say anything, and was like, we're fine, we can go ahead and do this. And I was like, whoa. And I was like, I, you know, I quickly pulled staff into this, I'm like, I don't think you can do that project, but, you know, here, talk to staff. But it put me in a very awkward position, but it was clearly not, it wasn't building a house either, it was doing something else, construction related. But I just, my concern is the city, from a liability standpoint, from an enforcement standpoint, and then ultimately, the end of the day, it's, the enforcement is about the public health, and how do we really have the ability to control what goes on in a construction site outside of what you just described, Lisa?
And I would add one other thing, and I don't want to get into too much detail about this somewhat, you know, complicated doctrine, but there is a doctrine called the public duty doctrine, which essentially states that the city does not have a duty to individuals, but has a duty to the public in general. There are exceptions to the public duty doctrine that could come into play if the city inserted itself into this process and made, at least impliedly made representations that moving forward would be safe for people, and that that would be something the city would enforce.
So the last question I have is, does staff or our interim city manager have any, you know, feedback for us? I know this email was sent very late, just prior to, and to no fault of you, Luke, it just, it is what it is, but we're kind of digesting on the fly in the wake of needing to get feedback by end of business date tomorrow, but I'm wondering if staff has any recommendations?
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, my, I'm processing this in my head right now, and what I would ask Luke, if, if you would carry back this idea, if the council concurs, that any, any site that is approved, contractor approved, that they've got to post something, you know, like a four-by-four plywood sign that conforms to certain lettering inside that says COVID Safe Construction Site. If violations occur, please call the following numbers, and have that go to a state or county number, not our number, because we can't do that sort of reactionary enforcement. But then that would give the neighbors--
That might also like, oh, it might also cut down as well on the number of complaints that are going, because right now, all complaints go to the state anyway. And you don't want five people reporting a construction site that is in compliance. So I like the idea of posting something, more than an eight-and-a-half by 11 pieces paper stapled to the side of a construction site, which I have seen. I think a larger sign would be helpful.
Yeah, that's why I just kind of pictured in my mind's eye, a four-by-four, three-by-four plywood sign painted white, blue COVID letters, COVID Safe Site, and somebody else's phone number.
I like that. Deputy Mayor, did you have anything else?
No, that was that, thank you so much.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
I think, I think other feedback is, if, if construction is going to start to resume, I think other notifications to-- I think other notifications to the people who live near, and I don't know what kind of perimeter we want to have, but some sort of perimeter, letting people know what's happening, that, you know, this is happening, here's why, here are the precautions that are in place, and if you see any violations, here are the numbers to contact, so that the people who live near there will understand what's happening, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of changes happening to the, you know, stay-at-home orders, to what's open, what's closed, legislation, et cetera, a lot is changing, and I don't think most people can keep up with it all. So I think that would be really helpful, and that might also cut down on the phone calls to the cities as well.
Deputy Mayor, you had another question? Deputy Mayor?
I'm sorry, I was sitting here talking, I had my mute button on. Maybe Luke can help me with this one. How are we defining construction? Is it being defined currently through the discussions with the governor's office as being residential and commercial only? And when I say residential, I mean by dwelling unit, or are we talking about other types of projects, like, hey, I think I want to put a pool in my backyard? How are they defining construction? Are we talking about all construction, no matter what it is, or are they, have they defined that?
When I read the code, this Phase One document, and I only got it late this afternoon as well, it doesn't seem to distinguish, in my reading, between different types of construction. It just deals with construction projects in general. So that's, that's how I see it, at least. It seems to have a pretty, pretty broad application.
Okay. I mean, it's an interesting, it becomes more interesting then, if you're not defining it by, you know, producing a dwelling unit that someone would live in versus any construction project, right? Versus, you know, all the other industries that are shut down across the state and country. So, you know, I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to grapple with, and granted, there's a lot going on, so I may be missing things where there, you know, I know that the governors of Washington, Oregon, and California are trying to get the economy moving, I certainly appreciate that. Of course, we all want the public health to be the primary focus here, but is it just construction that we're starting with here, or are they talking about a litany of other industries, trying to get them back up and running?
Well, I know there are conversations regarding other industries as well, but this one particular request of the AWC for comment is specifically directed towards the construction industry.
Okay. I guess then I have a secondary comment, which is, is it worth defining, you know, necessary construction versus something that's not? And I, you know, that can be a very personal thing, right? You know, yes, I need my pool in my backyard, or I just need a house to live in, right? Those are two very different things, and, you know, maybe it's not worth defining those, but I just, you know, it's just kind of a curiosity question.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would agree that I think it needs definition. I didn't get a chance to really, I didn't see the stuff coming before the meeting, but I would agree that I think that things should be defined better than what they are. Do we have any other council members that want to weigh in? Luke, do you have what you need from us?
What I'm going to suggest is that I communicate with the interim city manager by email tomorrow to make sure I get down properly in writing the ideas, and what I heard was interim city manager talking about the larger COVID-19 safe sign, councilmember Stewart's idea about notification to neighbors, and then the mayor and deputy mayor's idea of a better definition of construction. Those were my notes, but I want to make sure I'm capturing this well in language. So I'm going to suggest I have an email conversation with the interim city manager tomorrow, get that finalized, and make sure that city comments are forwarded along.
Okay. And anybody else in the council, if you haven't had a chance to look at that, take the chance to do it tonight, and email the comments to the interim city manager.
And Luke, this is the interim city manager. Nice to meet you. You have my email address?
You know, why don't you give it to me, just to, just to make sure I have it in this time of pandemic.
First initial D, last name R-U-D-A-T@sumamish.us.
Perfect, and you can, you can tell how much of a dinosaur I am when I tell you that my, my email address is LukeEsther@AOL.com.
Thanks for joining us, Luke.
Can I have one thing, real quick? Sorry for Luke. Sorry.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, no, not question. I understand Nick was in quarantine for a while, and we hope he's feeling better.
Yes, and we're, Nick does have some asthma-related issues, so I know he's got to be very, very careful with any respiratory-related issues. So yes, he's, he's feeling well these days, and we'll hope that stays, stays his condition going forward.
Great.
And I'll pay it along with your kind remarks.
Thanks.
I didn't know that, Tom. I hope he's doing well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will do that, and thank you, everybody, for the ability to pivot very quickly on short notice.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, we've got one more thing on our agenda here. We've got, and that is the, we had talked about putting rental, kind of rental controls into place, or restrictions, or whatever you like to call them. Pam, I'm going to let you kind of take the lead on this one, since you and I talked about this this afternoon.
Sure. A number of our neighboring cities have passed resolutions. While the governor has put in place a restriction on evicting anyone, so no one can be evicted right now, you can rack up late fees and interest if you are late on your rent. And so many of our neighboring cities have passed resolutions that have put protections in place so that no late fees or interest can be charged to those who are, in fact, late on their rent. And they've applied this to both individuals as well as businesses, because as you can imagine, if you're a small business and you've been shut down, you are struggling to pay your rent, and if you start racking up those late fees and interest, it's going to dig a hole that you may never be able to get out of. And of course, that applies to individuals as well, who might be out of a job and are waiting for some sort of assistance to come. So I don't know that we can do it, take final action tonight, because this was a special meeting, and it was not on the agenda, but I thought it might be good to be able to give direction to staff to go ahead and draft something for our next meeting, to be able to provide that type of protection for those in Sumamish.
Counsel, do we have any comments, questions?
Just to share with people, I did provide to the interim city manager and to Mike Sugg, the examples that Redman...
And I can give you two other cities. Okay, so we have got for comments here, we have got, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, first, it might be helpful if that's shared with the full council, so that we can see that as well. And then I do have some other questions, just relative to the impacts of doing something like this, and maybe other cities have already studied this, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. But no one escapes the impacts financially from COVID-19. So, you know, by, you know, for a renter who's not paying their landlord, the landlord then doesn't generate any funds either, putting them also in jeopardy. So then, you know, everyone is financially struggling. So I'm just curious, you know, the impact, do we have any, or have other cities looked at what those financial impacts might be to landlords? Because a landlord could be an individual who's renting out a home, it could be an entire apartment building by a large, you know, corporation. I mean, it can look very different, and the impact to the landlord can be very different. So I'm curious if other cities have looked at it, and I guess I would want to understand the impacts of doing this before, you know, taking any formal action. So I don't know, you know, I don't know what councilmember Stewart forwarded, but I don't know if the interim city manager might be able to speak to that, or if we don't have that information, if it's even potentially obtainable.
Deputy Mayor, and the cities that I collected all kind of did different things, and I will forward that to them. Second, I have got, councilmember Trina's next.
Hey, so I'm, I'm noticing that King County already is doing, is already have rent assistance going on in April, and that they're actually looking to provide more funds on another bill that will need to be passed, a stimulus package. So, and I imagine, I mean, I hate to be, I imagine most of that money's going to Seattle residents, even though it's King County, majority of people who need assistance are in the city. That's larger than ours, so Seattle's going to get the gist of it. So are we thinking, is the thinking then that the city of Sumamish would be looking to help pay people's rent? Is that, is that what we're asking, is that what you're asking me to think about and to, and to? So that's for Pam, or for the mayor, or for Dave?
I'm happy to answer, I'm happy to answer that. What I'm proposing is, at this time, no, is not that, not yet. Just to clarify for you, the programs that like United Way and King County have put in place tend to be for folks at 50% or lower of AMI, so it probably isn't affecting a lot of people in Sumamish. But the, what I was proposing was really more along the lines of, while there is a moratorium on evicting people, if you're late on your rent, you can't be evicted, but you can start racking up late fees and interest charges, which means when you do start to get assistance, you're not going to owe your, whatever it is, your $1,000 in rent, you're going to owe that, plus all of the late fees and interest that have accrued in that time. And so what cities are doing is they're, they're putting a moratorium on those late fees and the, and the interest that will accrue if you are late on your rent. So no, I'm not suggesting, it would, it would cost Sumamish zero, if that's your question.
Yeah, that was, yep. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, I'm kind of similar to Deputy Mayor Malchow's comments, that I'm concerned that we are always the unintended consequences, picking winners and losers, injecting ourselves in private business is always something that we've got to think long and hard before even consider it. At this point, and also the comment that Seattle may, or King County may be distributing mostly to Seattle, which is the most needy, I think that's the right thing. I know we're not talking about creating funds, but is there a crisis in Sumamish? I don't, I don't hear it. I think the landlords are being very fair to their tenants, as far as late fees are concerned, for the most part. And many landlords, whether it be residential, which is four units or less, or commercial, five units or more, can be a small private investors paying a large mortgage, and if rents ceases, it is a huge burden on them. So retaining the in-place contractual incentives, I think, is important for private business, and not getting away of that. So I don't support the city drafting regulation interfering with private business at this point in Sumamish.
Yeah, so you may not be hearing the crisis, but we do have small businesses that have been shut down, that while they can get some, many of the loans are only covering enough for them to continue to pay their employees. So while they have zero income, they are still expected to pay their rent, and the commercial real estate companies, not all of them in Sumamish, are actually doing anything to assist or give any kind of leeway to any of those small businesses. And I will forward to the entire council the examples that I sent to the city manager and to the mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick comment and to inject perspective, is that not every small business operates with rent. There are small businesses that are shut down, that are not generating income right now, that operate out of their homes. And I fear that if we decide to help one group, that we may have other small businesses that say, hey, what about me? I have to pay my mortgage, and I write off a portion of my home, but I, you know, I'm not getting any assistance here, I still have to make my mortgage payment. So I, it's just food for thought, that not every small business is running out of a storefront paying rent, some of them are running out of their homes. And in Sumamish, there's like 4,000 of them.
That's a good point. So what direction do we want to give to staff? Do we want to at least gather information and look at it, or do we want to, so what direction do we want to have it head in?
I think, I think at this point, I would not recommend pursuing it further at this point.
I would agree with Councilmember Ross.
You don't even want to get additional information on how other cities have crafted this to the concerns that you've raised?
I think that can be sent out to us, and then if we need to, we can bring this back.
Jason's in the queue.
Yep. Oh, okay, sorry. Councilmember Ritchie?
My consideration is, I hear a lot of, I guess there's a lot of information I don't know. I didn't get the information either, I'd like to review it, but at the same time, I would ask the city manager, is an encumbrance for the city manager to try to put something together based upon the information that you have, or is there additional information that you would need? It's a really good conversation, guys. I'm not, I'm not, I think the 4,000 small businesses, I think that, you know, there's a balance, there's people that need, we're in uncharted territory, I don't think there's any ill will or any negative thoughts on any of this stuff, and it is a balanced conversation, I appreciate that. But I guess my, just in terms of staff time, my consideration is, do we have, is our council will to try to ask the staff, if the staff, based upon the city manager's belief, to be able to put something together or reevaluate this? Is there time, energy, capacity to do that, or can we help? Is it, I mean, is there a need to even look at this? I personally think there is, but I don't want to put an encumbrance on staff, and that's why I would ask the city manager what his considerations would be.
Mayor, members of council, the city manager, and the staff will follow the directions of the council, but we can do that, we can put together a matrix or something that can provide, and provide that back to the council. We'll do a quick turnaround, if that's what the desire of the council is.
No, I, just more to the point, I guess I'm trying to figure out what everyone else is doing. I mean, are they just kind of going, rolling with what the, what the state's doing? I mean, my own purposes, having done some work for King County Housing Authority, the South Sound is far and away, in our region, I mean, South Sound, I mean, like, South King County Sound, Tuck, Willa, Burien, way, way... County Sound, Tuckwillaburian, way, way, way more economically challenged than the city of Seattle per capita. But having said that, I would love to be able to review all that, to determine what they're doing based upon their, and we don't have a ton of renters, so I don't know what we could do, if it's going to make that big of an impact, but something's better than nothing, potentially. I think it's worthwhile to try to get a survey. And if that's possible, maybe King County has it, maybe it's a phone call, maybe that's what Councilmember Stewart sent, I don't know. I'm just trying to get more information, so we don't just sweep it under the rug, when we may be able to potentially help people, or find a middle ground that we can help everybody, or find that anything we do is going to hurt one side over another. So more information's always a good thing, if it's within the capacity of the staff to try to get that information. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, just a couple points. Number one, just because others do it, doesn't mean we need to do it. So I think it's not a good rationale for us doing it. The other point is, there's not only small, we've talked a lot about businesses, not only a lot of small businesses, there's a lot of small landlords. And so I get very concerned in broad-brust regulation, that it hurts, unintentionally hurts those that they didn't mean to hurt, and that the policy is generated from emotion, from perceived atrocity. So we can certainly find some unfriendly landlords, big or small. But I'm very concerned that, again, we're picking winners and losers, and this broad brush may be ill-advised.
Oh, and our city attorney wants to weigh in?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Many of our municipal clients have asked about the legal authority or the legal ability for a city to insert itself into the Landlord Tenant Act, which is governed by RCW 5918, that's the Residential Landlord Tenant Act. Commercial tenancies are governed under just principles of general contract law. So inserting itself into a private contract would be, for a commercial contract, would be no different than inserting itself into a mortgage and lending transactions and things like that. What we've advised is if a council, and this is likely what Redmond and Izagwa have done, because I imagine most city attorneys would agree with me, if the city council thinks that it is a good idea to adopt a moratorium on late fees, penalties, and things like that, if it does so, and it does so knowing that it's unlikely that it can legally stand behind and enforce that moratorium, if the landlords voluntarily comply with such a moratorium, then perhaps an argument can be made that you've achieved your purpose by enacting that legislation. But I do think you should know that it's very unlikely, in my opinion, that the city could insert itself into a private landlord-tenant relationship. The governor's order places a moratorium, and it's within his authority to do so under his emergency powers. He's placed a moratorium on civil unlawful detainer actions, which are governed by RCW 5912. It's not the Landlord Tenant Act, it's a different chapter, and he has asked the courts not to accept those filings. So it's likely to have effect on citizens in Sumamish who are impacted due to the governor's actions. If the council wants to take action, placing a moratorium on late fees and penalties, do so knowing that it would be likely unenforceable.
That's all I need to know.
Wow. Well, that kind of puts a different look on it, doesn't it? Okay, so, does anybody have any direction, any other comments they want to make on how we have staff work on something that we can't enforce? I guess, I mean, I don't know how to say this.
Well stated.
Well, I'm disappointed, but I mean, it is what it is. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, moving on. All right, so the next thing on our list is the council reports and city manager reports. So council reports, I'm going to go through, listen, just tell me if you have a report. And let's start with the one that I forgot last time, and I didn't mean to. Councilmember Stewart?
No, I have nothing to report that I haven't already raised. Thanks.
Councilmember Ritchie?
All good here, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, although, to save us a little bit of time, I will simply point to the email that Deanna Dawson sent out last week. I had a meeting with the SDA board that included King County Executive Dow Constantine, as well as public health official from King County, as we talked through some of the issues relative to COVID-19. I think one of the things that's notable here, and it relates a little bit to our previous conversation on the construction, is that part of the rationale behind the pause in construction is the PPE, and the availability for healthcare workers. And if we initiate a requirement for PPE for construction workers, then you have yet another industry attempting to get a commodity that there aren't enough of. So until the supply chain kind of levels off, and gives our healthcare providers the PPE, and not just healthcare providers, that would be first responders as well, that was a concern that I heard from that meeting. But the rest of it is all contained in Deanna's, you know.
Councilmember Treen?
The only thing that I would like to report is that I talked to a gentleman who happens to be on the YMCA board, also is one of my neighbors, during a social distancing talk, mentioned that he knew the contract very well, and thought that we might, if we want to take a look at that, we might want to wait until after the COVID thing is over, because how many people are actually going to return back to the YMCA? And, you know, right now, it's money maker for the big YMCA, is what he said. And it's doing very well for them, and not so well for Sumamish. But that may turn around and be the exact opposite when it reopens. So just want to throw that out. It's just a random meeting, and turned out to be pretty informational, so I just pass that on.
Thank you. Councilmember Ross?
Nothing for me, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Gamblin?
We're all good here, thank you.
Okay, then I just had a couple of things I wanted to note, that Sumamish has come in number one, as far as our census numbers go. We've got the highest percentage of the cities returning numbers coming in, which is awesome. So we're going to keep pushing that on the website and everything. Also, as of today, they have put on hold the people out in the field. So they have also extended the date line of when those numbers will be back. So until such time that our field workers will be allowed back in, then we'll know we'll have a date of when it's extended to. But that's, won't be until, you know, it's basically, until we have dates, which we don't have right now. Then the last thing I want, and I had listed on here, was something, and I had talked to Councilmember Stewart about this today, was some of the other cities I noticed are, what they're doing is they're looking into the human services accounts to see if they had anything left from their funds from last year, going into the following year. So looking if they have funds that are just sitting there, leftover funds, before the end of the year, and making sure that if we have any, we get those used, especially right now, and get those to find out where are Sumamish residents, where are we in need? Where are they going to the food bank? Are they going to Hope Link? Where are folks going? And make sure that maybe we can hear back on that, so we can direct, so we don't have money that is for sitting in for human services, but just sitting in an account. Any comments or anything from council on that? Okay. Okay, and city manager?
Mayor, members of council, no, we'll get that turned around for you very quickly, so that you and the council members have some idea on those numbers.
Excellent.
Thank you. No other report.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so we have no executive session? Anything for the good of the order?
Do adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, stay safe, everybody.
Bye. Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Later.
Bye.